April 7, 2025, Michigan Board of Appeals. I'd like to welcome everybody here. And I'd like to welcome everybody out to the classroom and everything in the convention. Especially you, everybody here. Thank you all, thanks for saying, thanks for coming, rain, what's with the fall weather? Thanks for always being in our corner. Just be with us, guys, we're just down to business and keep everything moving on a professional and working management. So thank you all for all the lessons you've been training.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and the two republics, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public comment. And I have Mr. James Ashley from Gurley Road signed up to speak. He must come forward. Mr. Ashley, are you here? Oh, okay. You want to come up and speak to us now?
I guess I signed the wrong thing. I didn't know I was signing, I thought that was a sign-in sheet. I didn't know it was.
Okay, you want to talk about the cotton patch when it comes up?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
That's no problem. When it comes up, we'll let you come up and speak.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
No problem. Okay. And the other two gentlemen, you know yours next time, right?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, now we do.
All right. All right. The next on the agenda is the National Apprenticeship Week Proclamation. And the presenter is Candace Lauter from Stanley Community College.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Coming in front of you tonight on behalf of Stanley Community College. As you know, the college has been doing a lot of work with our workforce development partners to expand apprenticeship opportunities in Stanley County. Apprenticeship is an employer-led process, and locally, our outreach and expansion of our own sponsored program has helped create more apprenticeship opportunities in Stanley County. Apprenticeship USA and the U.S. Department of Labor have historically celebrated apprenticeship in the United States with a week-long celebration in the fall. But this, in 2026, National Apprenticeship Week will be moving to the spring. And so to help facilitate this transition, we will recognize National Apprenticeship Day on Wednesday, April 30th. Like last year, this year we will be hosting an employer interest event at Stanley County Livestock Arena. We're inviting Stanley County employers to join us to learn more about the apprenticeship model and how this valuable tool can help meet the workforce challenges of the future. You all are invited to join us and meet with local employers and our partners who are with us in hosting the event. These include the Stanley County EDC, Stanley County Chamber, NC Works Career Center, the Small Business Center, and Stanley County Schools. And if any of you would like to join us, we would love to have you there to engage with our local community. In your folders, you should have a proclamation declaring Wednesday, April 30th, as National Apprenticeship Day in Stanley County. We ask that you join us and our nation again this year in recognizing this important day for the workforce for tomorrow. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and appreciate your consideration.
Chairman.
We do. Go ahead.
Candace, what date did you say and what time?
Wednesday, April 30th. It's a breakfast meeting at the Livestock Arena, eight o'clock in the morning. Last year, we did a lunch at the Small Business Center, and we were hoping to engage with a different employer demographic, so we moved it to breakfast this year.
Are you in charge of this at Stanley Community College? Do you do the internship?
I'm the Associate VP of Career Connections, so I work with all of our workforce development partners to expand apprenticeship. But we also have in our program area external affairs with career fairs, other employer outreach, and corporate training.
If you have a student that is in early college, would they be able to do this?
Well, are you asking about the event on the 30th or apprenticeship?
No, to be an apprentice and do an internship.
So with the employer-led process, employers recruit, screen, and train their own apprentices. So the work that we're doing right now is to expand apprenticeship opportunities with the employers. So we don't directly place apprentices in these programs. The employer retains the control over that selection process. So yes, an early college student would be eligible, but the employer would ultimately screen and select their apprentice for the program.
The reason I ask is because of a high school senior. There's no limit. If he can get his foot in the door as an intern or an apprentice, and the people there at the business say, hey, this is a pretty good guy. And then, once they go to college, you know, they can get their foot in the door, and this is a really great opportunity. And I'm tickled to death seeing you do it. I preach it a lot of times to my high school seniors and say, man, you can go to Duke Power and go IBM, and they find out just who you are. And then when you get through with college, man, you got a job. So thank you for doing this. That's powerful.
It is powerful. And I think if you think about it as the, you know, the continuum, there's plenty of exposure opportunities that our school system's working with to increase exposure to what careers are available here. And then, you know, as the field narrows, you go into an internship potentially, and then as the field narrows even more, it can be a paid apprenticeship into a really meaningful high-wage, high-growth career. So we're very excited about it. When I took the position with the college last year, there were 17 registered programs and about 30 apprentices. And as of last count last week, there were 20 registered programs and 63 registered apprentices. So it's working.
I kind of jumped the gun a little bit. Before I get approval for the proclamation, I need to get approval for the amendment, adjustment to the agenda. If I could get approval for the agenda. Got approval, I have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Now, I'd like to see what the pleasure is of board for the proclamation for National Apprenticeship Week.
First, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented for a National Apprenticeship Week.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now they got caught back up. Next on the agenda is the Board of Adjustments' appointment. The presenter is Bailey Emmerich, Planning Director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. The first item I have before you is the appointment of one planning board, or Board of Adjustment member for the Stanley County Board of Adjustment. The Stanley County Board of Adjustment consists of seven members with two alternates appointed by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners in staggered three-year terms. Michael Williams was appointed to the Board of Adjustment in July of 2025, but has recently been employed by the county and can no longer serve. Therefore, someone needs to be appointed to finish out his term, which expires in July of 2028. There are currently two volunteer applications, Kevin Brickman, who currently is employed by the Mecklenburg County Parks and Rec Department as a senior planner, and also Kevin May Jr. He has not previously served on any boards, as I know of. All applications of volunteers willing to serve on the Board of Adjustment are included in your packets. As a board, you are able to fill this position or potentially table this item until additional applications are received. Please appoint one member to the Board of Adjustment to serve three-year term expiring in June of 2028.
Okay. Heard the motion. Appointees. What's the, we have Kevin E. May is one of them, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I have a.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Kevin May Jr. a couple months ago. He had applied for a different board. And he's actively involved in zoning and planning and that type thing. And I was pleased with the conversation I had. I would like to nominate Kevin E. May Jr. for that particular position.
Thank you, Mr. Lauter. Do I have any other motions or? Having no other motions, all in favor of appointing Mr. May to the Planning and Adjustment Board? Say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're still up. Now we have the rural recreation rezoning request for the cotton patch campground. Oh, I jumped again. I'm sorry for the subdivision ordinance. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm marking these things off before I get to them.
If you will allow me one second, I'll pull up my slideshow here. Hasn't minded itself. Let's see. I don't know. Okay. I don't know if it's gonna. Okay, I don't know if it's gonna work. The mouse is nowhere to be found on my screen. Okay, we can proceed. You want to wait?
Just make sure everything's tied in there. Do it quick.
Thank you.
Before she does again.
All right. So just take me one quick second. Or hopefully one quick second. We'll see. It's loading.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. About one year later, I can get started. Okay, so the first item I have before you is ZA 25-01. So this is a series of text amendments to the Stanley County Subdivision Ordinance for revisions to the current requirements and also the numbering of the table of contents. So the purpose of the Stanley County Subdivision Ordinance is to aid in promoting orderly development, provide for suitable neighborhoods with adequate services, and promote safe environments. Subdivision Ordinance lays out all the requirements and regulations for all subdivisions that are surveyed and recorded within the zoning jurisdiction of Stanley County. For major subdivisions, the current requirements for improvements is that they achieve 100 points in what is labeled as a construction criteria point system, which is currently in Section 66-90 of the subdivision ordinance. The point system allows for developers of major subdivisions to decide what the improvements for the property will be, as long as they can achieve the required 100 points. For example, water in a growth area is 45 points, public sewer in a growth area is 45 points, and street lighting is 10 points. With those three improvements, a developer would achieve the 100 points and not have to have any further improvements if they choose not to. The construction criteria point system is not a common practice among adjoining counties or municipalities. With those proposed, with the proposed changes, the subdivision ordinance would now make certain improvements required as opposed to being able to choose. The proposed amendments would remove the point system and make things such as water and sewer connection within 1,500 feet required, streetlights, tree planting, buffering, recreational, recreation sidewalks, curb and gutter, et cetera. And I'll get into the rest of those as we go on. So these required, proposed required improvements are all listed in Section 615-15 of the proposed ordinance. Staff mainly refer to the subdivision ordinances of Columbus County, Cabarrus County, Rowan, and Archdale. There's also some other provisions in there, including for minor subdivisions, the property owner must require a driveway permit from NCDOT prior to review officers signing off on the plat unless the NCDOT says that it is not needed. NCDOT will also have to review all minor subdivisions, which will be serviced by a state-maintained road. Staff has been in communications with DOT about this requirement, and I can get into that later on as well. This was reviewed by the Stanley County Planning Board on February 10th. They did table that at their February meeting and heard it again at their March 10th meeting. They had some suggested changes, which included the removal of Leyland Cypress trees on page 17, the addition of pickleball, addition of the NCDQ requirement, and addition of parking language. And I'll explain those further as we go along. It was approved unanimously at their March 10th meeting, and you all received a copy of the updates in your packets. So this is the current subdivision requirement point system. So as you can see, just from looking at this list, each improvement is listed out, and then beside it is how much it's worth in points. So tree planting's 10 points, active recreation's 15 points. So as you go in and add those up and get 100 points, then you're deemed sufficient for planning staff to move forward in your process of getting it before the planning board. And we've run into things, and I can, you know, I can go off just counting on my hand that, you know, very rarely do you see active recreation, very rarely do you see tree planting, very rarely do you see sidewalks. You don't see some of those larger things in the improvement system, or the improvement list, excuse me. Typically, what you're going to see the most is, you know, an HOA, or storm drainage, or you may see some street lining, and you'll definitely see a sign, but a lot of those bigger things you don't typically see. And this isn't what has, or isn't what's used across the board in the state, from what I've seen. Most places have just, this is what you have to do, not this is your options. And as I went over, this is what was requested amendments from the planning board, and I'll get into those in a little bit, as far as breaking down each of those and what section that they're in. So the proposed required improvements that would potentially be put into here, into the subdivision ordinance, water and sewer connection, if either system has capacity and is within 1,500 feet, the subdivision must be hooked up and the cost is at the subdivider's expense. Streetlights required in major subdivisions at no more than 200 feet apart. Tree planting, two trees per lot, the allowed list of trees are in Section 8. Existing vegetation can be utilized if the planning board allows for it to be. Buffering recreation in open space, so a 50-foot stream buffer, a 30-foot buffer around all major subdivisions. And major subdivisions with 25 lots or more are required to have an active recreation area. The 50-foot stream buffer is actually technically a requirement, excuse me, a requirement by NCDQ. It was initially at 35 feet, but I bumped it up to 50 just because it makes sense for us to be on the same playing field in that area. Types of recreation, tennis court, playing apparatus, basketball courts, slide swings, pickleball. I forgot to put that on there. An HOA, I left this optional, but if it is utilized, then it must be organized before the lots are created or built upon, and it must establish the maintenance and upkeep contributors. Sidewalks will be required on at least one side of the street. The planning board has the option to require it on both sides if they see fit. Curb and gutter shall be provided in all subdivisions, and it must meet NCDOT specs and be along the entire length of each street. Signage, one monument sign at each entrance that cannot exceed 30 square feet in height or 10 feet in height, sorry, 30 square feet in size or 10 feet in height. And we will be requiring verification from the appropriate agencies that these improvements have been completed. So curb and gutter, streets, sidewalks, anything of that nature, DOT is going to have to send in verification that they do meet their specifications. And, yes, okay. So sign area calculated, so this is, I just threw this in here just as a reference point. So for signs, this is how we typically, for monument signs, calculate the area. So the brick pillars that you see on the sides and then on the bottom, that isn't included in what's considered the face of the sign. The face of the sign is where the actual verbiage of the sign is at. Otherwise, and obviously, the height is measured from the ground up. But just for reference, because I know sometimes it can be, a lot of people have asked if it's the whole entire sign, but it's just where that area is at. So minor subdivision change, I've spoken with Mark Morgan about this several times over at DOT. We've ran into some, just some issues or just confusion when it comes to minor subdivisions because currently DOT doesn't review minor subdivisions, which is four lots or less. So anything that's divided into four lots or less, they don't see it. But the issue that they ran into is that sometimes multiple of those lots are served by a state-maintained road. And so if you have multiple driveways close to each other, sometimes it can impact them as far as site distance and things like that. And so I've been in communication with him about this, and he didn't require or ask that he necessarily sign off on them, but he does want to see them and require that they get a driveway permit if necessary at that time. Obviously, if lots are served by an access easement or something of that nature, this wouldn't apply because that's not a state-maintained road. But if it's coming off of 138 or 740 or something like that, and there's multiple driveways that are going to be so close together, he does prefer to see it. Just because on the back end, what I've found is that it can become a problem for the person who's wanting to develop the land or build homes on the land, because then they may have to move lot lines or recombine parcels because it's not going to fit into DOT requirements. And so I think it would save some people just a headache on the backside of things if we go ahead and put this in there. Okay, so these are the changes that were put in by the Stanley County Planning Board. NCDQ addition, so this is page 12, and this is where you'll find in the phases that I've laid out, phases one, two, and three. So for minor and major subdivisions, they're listed out in phases as far as the process of things. So in phase two, you'll find the preliminary plat must show that all North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality regulations have been met, if applicable, and proof of contact with DEQ must be provided. And the same when it comes to buffering, NCDQ requirements must also be met and confirmation of contact with DEQ must be obtained. And that also goes back to that buffer that's going to be required for them. So we'll have to have proof that is, if there is a stream or a creek or something of that nature that goes through the property, we'll need to know that DEQ has been notified and that they either have requirements that need to be met or obtained. This is the parking requirement that the Stanley County Planning Board has asked to be implemented. So this says the driveway area, this is for major subdivisions. The driveway area must accommodate one 9-by-20 paved parking space per every 300 square feet of the dwelling. A shared driveway is required to meet this regulation for each home. If the home has a garage, that shall be included in the number of required spaces. There shall be one overflow parking lot for every, per every 15 homes to accommodate for two extra spots per dwelling. The planning board may amend the parking space requirement. The overflow parking shall have a vegetative screening buffer of trees complying with Article 2, Section 8 of this ordinance, which is where you can find all the required buffering as far as trees, bushes, plants, and those things. This was a large topic of conversation for the planning board. They did focus on this and want to see something in there regarding parking. So this is what they agreed upon, and this is what was put in there currently. And I believe that that is the end. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
I do.
Okay.
I'm looking over this, cluster clustering with conservation design, and that's something that was on the old list, and that's something that's going to be taken away. They got 35 points. You know, if I'm a developer, I'm looking at this list, and okay, it's almost like money. I can get this, this, and this. And man, I don't even have to provide electricity, right? I mean, that's, that's one of the, we're getting rid of the 100-point system.
Yes. So yes, that will go away.
And I, this is just a question that I have, and keep Morgan Hills in mind as a specific example. Those lots at Morgan Hills are zoned R10 and R8, mostly R10. However, as you can see, and I know that's in the city, it's not us, but I was just thinking, okay, if you have a zoning stipulation of R10, can you come in with a cluster and say, okay, we're going to provide a pool, pickleball courts, a swimming pool, and we're going to be able to take those houses and position them to where it's like R6? Is that, is that possible?
So since I've been here, the clustering option has never been utilized. So the clustering allows for you to have a smaller lot with larger amenities or things like that. So I mean, as far as the county, they technically could have asked for it, or could ask for if it's left in there, but I've never seen it utilized. It's similar to what a conservation subdivision essentially is. But again, because a lot of times you won't necessarily find those small of lots in the county, just because in order to have an R6 lot or an R8 lot in the county, you have to have public water and public sewer in order to fit, because you're not going to fit a septic and a well on a lot that size. So very rarely will you find that, I've talked with David Azell, and you're going to need at least a 15,000-square-foot lot, 20,000 more than likely, in order to fit a well and a septic on there. Just because out in the county, you're not going to find areas that have both utility services. But in the instance that you do, you know, the clustering option, you surely could ask for that, but you'll have to utilize amenities more so.
So if you had like a sewer system running close to your house, and you were, say, a subdivision was able to hook on, or water, you know, to where they could have accessibility to that, who comes back after two, three years and there's no pool, there's no pickleball courts, there's no dog walk or recreational? Who enforces, hey, you said in order to cluster those houses?
Right.
You were going to build some recreation, you know, facilities?
Technically, yeah. So technically, the Stanley County zoning or subdivision ordinance requires that improvements are completed before everything is finished.
Okay.
So you have to have those improvements done in order to. So you have to have those improvements done in order to, you know, obviously. But if for some reason it's an oversight and say that they don't, then the subdivision meets noncompliance, and then it becomes a zoning issue. Yeah.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Just going to bring this open to a hearing, right?
Yes, sir.
I have the hearing now open for ZA twenty-five oh one subdivision ordinance amendment. Anyone wanting to speak for or against subdivision amendment, please step forward. Seeing none, closes the public hearing, and asks the pleasure of the board.
Chair, make a motion that we approve the new subdivision ordinance amendments as published.
I'll second that.
Vice Chairman Keen made the motion, and a second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Motion carried, seven zero. Okay, next on the agenda is Ms. Bailey again for the real recreational rezoning request from Cotton Patch Campground.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item that I have before you is a request by James Ashley for the rezoning of an approximately three-acre portion of Cotton Patch Campground in order to accommodate for existing campsites. It's currently zoned RA, and he's asking for it to be rezoned to RR in order to accommodate these sites. Give me one second, let me find my paper. Sorry.
So this is just a portion of the campground area you're talking about, is a three-acre portion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, so there's currently five acres that are zoned County RR. This is the site of Cotton Patch Campground. At one time, back in the early two thousands, the entire, the entire site was zoned RR. But the previous owner went back and rezoned approximately, you know, the thirteen acres back to RA. So he left the remaining five acres for the campground. The owners plan to subdivide the property into three parcels. There's no additional campsites that will be added to what is currently there. He did do a technical review committee meeting with myself, or planning staff, utilities, environmental health, the fire marshal, and got all the information he needed from them. Environmental health did say he didn't need anything further from them because he did meet the state requirements, and he does have a permit from the state for it, and it will meet all the campground requirements in the zoning ordinance. The planning board did unanimously recommend approval of this request at their March tenth meeting. Mr. Ashley added these campsites unknowingly without knowing that the area had been rezoned back to RA. So he added these campsites under the impression that the whole parcel was still zoned RR. So the fifteen sites he's trying to bring into compliance with that RR requirement for campgrounds. This is an aerial view of the site on Gurley Road. So as you can see this section through here, this is where the current campsites are. So I'll show you in a second where exactly that five acres lies in terms of the zoning, but this is where the current area is. And Mr. Ashley does reside on this property as well. So this, this will show you, this, or dark green, rather, section is where the County RR currently is, and this is where the campsites currently are that remain. The rest of this, as you can see, this light green, this is all currently RA, so it's still zoned residential agricultural. And so he's requesting some campsites be added into there. This is where the campsites lie that he has added. So this is that three-acre section, approximately three-acre section that he's asking to be added in here. And there's a survey that I'll show you in a second that kind of maps out where these parcels will be at, but he's wanting to parcel out the campground on its own, but wanting to make sure that he's in compliance because if this does not pass, then he will have to remove those campsites because technically it is, it will be noncompliance. So this is a survey. This shows you track one, two, and three. Track one would technically be vacant, there's nothing there. There is some flood zone on this side of the property, but there's currently nothing on this area. Track two up here, this is where he currently resides, so this is his home. So he's asking that this be subdivided out. He'll obviously have to have an access easement through the campground to get into that property, but as proposed, the access would meet the zoning requirements. And then track three, this would be the actual campground. So this is where you'll find the sites that are not currently in compliance, and this is where the existing ones are. I will say, Mr. Ashley, no one necessarily turned him in. He did come in to see me because as he was getting the property surveyed, his surveyor noticed that these campsites weren't in the proper zoning district. And so he came in to ask me what could be done in order to get them into compliance. I haven't received any phone calls or complaints about the campsites at this point, and the sign has been posted, and everyone within a hundred feet was notified of this. This is, he sent me these, these are some drone pictures he took of the campground. So as you can see, these are the campsites that he added, and some over here as well. So you, when the trees are full, I don't believe you can see them from the road, but as of now, these are the campsites that he currently is asking to be put into that RR section of the property. And that is all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have for me.
Anyone have any questions they'd like to ask Bailey?
Bailey, are these full hookup sites?
I'm sorry?
Are they full hookup sites for the campers?
Yes.
Okay. That all was done through environmental health?
Yes, I'll permit report. Yes.
I know at Moore Mountain, you have a bathhouse for so many campsites.
Yes.
Well, do you, you know, people need a restroom and a bath?
Yes.
So will, will there be additional, a bathhouse for the extra?
There wouldn't be an additional one required for the additional campsites, no.
Would, would Mr. Ashley like to come forward and speak now? I'd like to declare a public hearing for the Cotton Patch Campground.
Yes, again, I'm sorry that we're here doing this this way and not the right way, but when I purchased the campground, I was under the assumption that when you purchase a campground, that the whole twenty-one acres was all zoned RR. And I just assumed instead of knowing ahead of time, so I just expanded and pulled the permits and did everything, but I did not know it was on an RA-zoned land. But I believe everything is up to code besides zoning. If y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer to the best of my knowledge.
I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say about rezoning for the camp, Cotton Patch Campground? Either for or against it? Seeing no others, I call the open forum closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that this board approves ZA twenty-five dash oh two, the rezoning request for James Ashley for the rezoning of approximately three acres of the Cotton Patch Campground because it consists with the twenty forty Stanley County Land Use Plan, and will meet all campground requirements in Stanley County zoning ordinance.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eifert, and a second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, seven zero. Next on the agenda is the National Day of Prayer proclamation, and the presenter is Commissioner Bill Lawhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, it's been going on for a number of years, I want to say seventy, thank you, seventy-four years, where the community gathers for the Day of Prayer. And the Day of Prayer proclamation that's requested is for May the first here in Stanley County. And goodness gracious, we definitely need a Day of Prayer. We need to pray every day. Hopefully, we are. But that's my presentation to approve the proclamation and designate May first, twenty twenty-five, to mark the seventy-fourth consecutive observance as a national day of prayer.
Sounds good. What would be the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Sounds good. Got a motion by Commissioner Lawhan, got a second, second by Commissioner Hatton. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Proclamation passes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The, you have a letter in your packet from the Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board seeking the appointment of Kelly Morgan from Charlotte Pipe as the private sector representative. He would be taking the spot of, that's currently filled by Brett Barbie. His term expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And Elizabeth Underwood from the Stanley County EDC as the economic development representative to the Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board. And Elizabeth would be taking the spot currently filled by Candace when she was economic developer. The term expires six thirty, twenty twenty-five. These are two-year terms from July one of twenty twenty-five concluding in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Kelly Morgan from Charlotte Pipe and Elizabeth Underwood from the EDC to these positions.
Do I have a motion for Kelly May and Elizabeth Underwood? Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, seven oh. Last thing we have on the agenda is the consent agenda, where everybody looked over it, and...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, consent agenda be approved.
Commissioner Lawhan has made the motion to approve it. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Eifert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, seven oh. Now we're down to the board members' comments, announcements. I'll start with Mr. Billy Mills.
If you're not busy in the afternoon, I just wanted to let you know that we have three high school softball and baseball teams in Stanley County. They're ranked number one in the western part of the state, or number two. South Stanley High School is ranked number one in the one-A division in western North Carolina in baseball. North Stanley is ranked number two in the two-A division in western North Carolina. West Stanley is number seven in the two-A division, and that's men's baseball. In softball, West Stanley is ranked number one in western North Carolina. You will see some good softball, two-A division, and North Stanley is third. We have some really, really great athletes and programs here in Stanley County, and that's, that's, that's got a lot to say about our young people and our, our coaches and our, our schools. So, and everywhere I go, I actually umpire the, some of the games, and everywhere I go, and they, they say, boy, Stanley County is really, I mean, you're talking about number one ranked in the state, and it's not just one team, it's several of them. So if you want to, if you, you know, you want to see history being made, go out and watch a baseball or softball game.
Update on new home permits. March twenty twenty-five, Stanley County had issued thirty-five new home permits, which is a decrease of two, three percent from the same time last year. Permit value was twelve million fifty-three thousand, which was an increase in the value. The average permit was three hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, which is up from where it has been. January through March twenty-five, new home permits totaled ninety-five, which is a decrease of sixty-two, thirty-nine percent. And the permit value was twenty-six million eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, which was a decrease from the same period of four million four hundred and fourteen thousand. Average permit value per house was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, sixty-nine dollars. I checked today to see what, because things, things are apparent, that they have slowed down. And I picked up a Realtor magazine over the weekend just to see what pricing was on houses. And the thing I noticed that lots of properties that were listed had price reductions. So it's a good time to buy a house. I checked with the bank today, or bank, I checked with URE, and mortgage rates are dependent upon good credit. The better your credit, the better your rate. It's kind of like insurance. If you get a lot of tickets, you're going to pay a high premium. If you don't pay your bills, you might not get a mortgage. But mortgage rates are now in the high sixes, which is good because they have been over seven percent. And so I'm encouraging people out there of Stanley County, if you want to buy a house, good time to start looking. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eifert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see Clinton out in public today. Clinton usually sends me a little postcard around what, August or September, but actually, I feel pretty blessed. I got a letter from him the other day, or last week, so thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
That's all you got? Okay. Mr. Crump?
No comment.
Hello. Don't have a lot to say either, but we got Easter around the corner, so everybody go worship, there's only one way. So don't have anything else to say, and thanks, everybody, for coming out. And the county commissioner meeting is adjourned. All in favor? Say it. And all opposed? Meeting is adjourned.